Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Wednesday, June 8th, 2016. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could have a moment of silence to reflect on our duties as servants of the town and also to pray for the safety and safe return of our soldiers both overseas and in the United States. In accordance with Mass General Law, I have to announce that this meeting is being recorded by East Summitta Cable Access and also by the East Summitta Board of Selectmen's Office. I have to ask if anyone else is recording the meeting. Seeing none, we can proceed. The first items on our agenda, we have the public forum, we have two speakers tonight, and as usual, it's a, you have five minutes to state your case and then we'll take it under advisement. So, we might as well start. Mr. Geraci, you're the six o'clock, we're a few minutes late, but...
Sorry. Thank you. Okay. Obviously, this has been going on and on and on and on, and I'm hopeful for resolution, really. And I come here as a gentleman. I've been a town taxpayer for multiple years. I built several houses in town, added to the tax base. I think I'm a good resident of East Summitta. There was an issue that was created several years back, and obviously, coming in front of you and asking for resolution, and I'm not looking for anything other than the money that I paid over and above what I should have paid, I'm looking to be reciprocated. I don't want any cash in my hand, they can credit my tax bill, how do you got to do it? It can be done. I was told there's no money, that's not true. There is money, they don't need any money, there's an account, an override account. So, I wasn't told the truth. But I looked into it through the appropriations and the town clerk. There's ways of doing it, but he has to be told to do it. So, I had a conversation with him last week, and I've had multiple conversations with you, with the Chair, and I'm just going to refer to one issue. Really goes back about a year and a half ago, maybe, and you got up and said, after I gave my particulars of the issue, you said that I wasn't treated fairly, the issue needs to be resolved, and let's do it. Well, here we are a year and a half later, and in turn, other pieces have fallen into the puzzle. And again, I'm not here to spit names, spit nails, I'm not going to get into it. I was always told if you can say something good about somebody, don't say anything. So, I'm not going there. But there's been several different, multiple...
I think I know what you, yeah, you mentioned before.
Yeah, there's, and I gave you four pages of gobbledygook in reference to the issue, and I'm not here tonight to talk about that. I don't want to talk about it at all. I just want to upright a wrong.
Yep. Okay.
And how do we do it at this point in time?
Actually, I'm in the process of gathering all the information, because I'm going back to the beginning.
Yep.
And we will, I promise you, we'll be getting back to you, and my goal is to get back to you before this board disbands.
I believe you.
So, I put a three-week timeframe on myself, so...
With a little bit of humor, and just to be fair and just, and that's all this is all about, fair and just, and there's no reason it couldn't have been resolved, the company that made the mistake back day one, and I was told by the board that they were bonded, and it was miniscule. And all they had to do was say, hey, this, 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 and done.
Yep.
And I was told that by one of their members, but it never happened because nobody wants to admit they made a mistake. So anyways, I'm not here to beat a dead horse, but obviously, I have been, so hopefully the horse can go rest somewhere here in a couple of weeks and we'll be all set.
Hopefully, it's not Mr. Turner's neighbor's horse.
No, we're not going to send him over his house. But anyways, I appreciate your help, really, and you have been helpful, and I appreciate the work you do for the town and you're a gentleman also. Thank you.
All right, our 6:05 public forum person is Mr. Turner, Rich Turner. Who I basically got to spend a day with yesterday while we were holding signs, so...
The tan.
Yes.
Mine's a little from here up. Everything else is gone.
How are you tonight?
I got my five minutes here, so that's all I'll take. And I want to congratulate both you guys, I'm sure you realize it's quite an honor to be the perfecter exactly that you pulled off. Obviously, shows that the citizens of the town respect, have confidence and faith in you. I know that you'll go forward and you'll earn that, keep and earn that faith and confidence in the people. And right now, enjoy the glorious feeling of achievement and accomplishment, because it's quite a great thing. And another thing is, Paul, that Tom Florence gave a hell of a nice talk at the, in the dugout thereafter thing, made everybody feel good, it was very heartfelt.
Good.
Well, the thing I'm here for tonight is, last time I was here, on May 10th, the last forum, I quoted a statement that Mr. Gorman, you had supposedly had quoted in the newspaper relative to your...
Dick, I'm going to tell you right now, before you start, this isn't a question answer, I'm not answering any more of your questions, I'm sitting on the wall...
I'm not going to ask your question.
No, I'm not answering none of your questions.
Okay, you don't have to, I'm just going to make my statement.
Okay, you say whatever you got to say.
I basically quoted Mr. Gorman as having quoted a statement relative to his support for Captain Dan O'Brien in the Republican. And Mr. Gorman said to me that he never made the statement. He said, Billy Gorman never said that. And you know why? You were on to ask me what newspaper I saw, I saw the article in, and at the time, I said it was either Republican or Reminder. Then you asked me that I shouldn't say things unless I can prove it, or something to that effect. All I'm saying is, here it is right here, the quotation marks, exactly what you said, that I quoted, right here in the paper. I bring this in here because it seemed to me that you were insinuating that I was not telling the truth, or that I was misleading, or wasn't being forthcoming in. And the statement is right here, where it said, "There is a lot of cops who make mistakes and do wrong things and make bad judgments," Gorman said, in quotation marks. You further said it was a Republican. Now, that's all I wanted to say, I just wanted to clarify that I did not make that up.
So, what's your point?
It was in the paper, it was...
What's your point?
My point was already made last week. My point here was to say that you...
You're not making no point, Dick, you're beating a dead horse, okay?
At the end...
You're beating a dead horse, it's done and over with, you're beating a dead horse.
Absolutely, it is over dead, but like I said last week, there are some things that are still out there that float around, and untruth should not go unchallenged, and that's why I feel I'm here. It's over with, but I, like I said, it's...
You got to do what your wife said, let it go, okay?
I am, I am letting it go, but I'm just...
Well, you're not, because you're here, you're here beating a dead horse.
I'm here because of the statement you made last week.
You're beating a dead horse again tonight.
You made a statement last week that insinuated that I did not, was not telling the truth. I was just always trying to do is round it out to prove that your support for Dan O'Brien, and that's what I did. Thank you very much.
No, it wasn't my support for Dan O'Brien, because I'm the one who told DeLazio he got the job, okay? So, Dan O'Brien would...
That was long after the fact, that's long after...
Dan O'Brien was just a guy I put in for the job.
I didn't come here to argue with Billy.
Like everybody else did.
Billy, I did not come here to argue.
So, that's your opinion.
No, it's not, it's right here. I made a statement, it's here at quotation marks, that's it, I don't want to argue anymore.
But Dick, that whole topic, it's done.
It's done with.
So, we don't have to keep bringing it up.
And we'll move on, I know that.
Okay, so, so regardless of what happened, I know you're trying to justify your comment, but still, it's, that's water over the bridge, which I guess is the same thing as...
He's insinuated that I was misleading somebody, or, I just want to say there, it was in the paper, I didn't make it up.
All right, thank you.
I haven't made up any...
Good, Dick. Oh, yes, you have.
Thank you.
Don't make me come back again, Billy, believe me.
No, I don't care, Dick, you can come back fifty times.
Well, no.
I really don't care, okay?
I don't want to, it's just...
I really don't care.
This is the last public forum anyways.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Good. Thank God it's the last one.
Good luck, Bill.
Get a life, Dick.
All right. All right, next, oh, actually, a couple of minutes early. Our next item is, I don't know if they're here, if, are all Bumpy's?
Yeah.
Okay. Come on up, are you Daryl?
I'm Daryl.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Mr. Geraci.
Hi, Daryl.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, Paul.
Kevin Neely, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
All right, let me, I'll just go briefly through this, and then we'll let you talk for a minute, tell us what you're planning on doing, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
All right, you're here tonight for, you have an application for a food service permit for Bumpy's Corner Store, which is 174 North Main Street, which we were trying to figure out where that was, we finally figured it out. And you're for hours of operation, Monday, Saturday, 9:00 to 6:00, and a waiver of site plan has been approved by the planning board, and the application has been approved by Amy Petrowski, the Health Director. So, if you'd like to give a brief description of what you're intending on doing?
It's, have you ever heard of Deals and Steals in Northampton?
Yes.
Okay, where they're the same identical thing.
Okay.
Natural and organic food.
Okay.
At an unbelievable discount prices. It's, you have items there that are, that are just past code dates, and that's why you're able to offer it, it's such a good, you know, discount. It's all marked, it's all, you know, approved via the, you know, state, and I'm retiring after 28 years, so that's what I want to...
Okay, okay. So, you're going to a store where you'll never be retiring, you're going to be there all the time, so...
Well, it beats working two full-time jobs for 18 years.
That's true, that's true. All right, well, that's great.
It's, and it's natural, organic, no food, I mean, no milk, let's see, you got cereals, all packaged foods.
Okay.
That's pretty much what it is.
Great. Any questions from the board?
No.
Okay, then what I'll do is I'll ask for, first, I'd like to propose a motion to approve the application for the food service permit.
So moved.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and I'd like to propose a motion to approve the hours of operation, Monday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All set? Welcome, good luck.
Next time, guys.
Nice meeting you.
Yeah. Next time.
Now, since, okay, I just want to make sure you were the 6:20 appointment. Our 6:20 appointment, I believe you're here, so we can, as I point to him and say, I believe you're here, that made a lot of sense, so we can go on to that. Why don't you come up, is it, is it Ram?
Yes.
Okay. How are you, sir? Nice to meet you.
How are you doing? Fine, thank you.
And once again, I'll just explain what you're here for, and if you'd like to give a brief description before we go through the process, you know, but you're here for an application for tobacco license, for, it's called Smoke and Convenience Plan at Vape, 173 Shaker Road. Hours of operation are Monday through Thursday, 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Friday, Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m., and Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and a food service permit, and there's been a waiver of site plan approved by the planning board, and the application's approved by Amy Petrowski, Health Director. So, feel free to explain what your, what your business is going to be.
Actually, the same thing before, have a, take convenience, like a cigarette, tobacco, chewing tobacco, the premium cigar, and also the soda drink, chips, and also the lottery, and maybe later on, if you put in the money, yeah, Western Union later on, the same thing what we have before.
So, this is where Dick's convenience was?
Exactly, same, location's same place.
Okay, well, that's good, I'm glad there's...
As it is, same.
Okay, great, great. Any questions from the board or anything?
No.
Okay, then what we'll do is, I'd like to propose a motion to approve the application for the tobacco license for Smoke and Convenience Plan at Vape.
So moved.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I'd like to propose a motion to approve the hours of operation, which are Monday through Thursday, 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Friday and Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m., and Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
So moved.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And finally, the food service permit, propose a motion to accept that, approve that.
So moved.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good, you're all set.
Thank you very much.
Welcome to town and good luck.
Thank you, sir. I have other shop in Park Street.
In where?
In the Park Street, you are discount tobacco.
Oh, okay.
So, a couple more.
Okay.
Thank you very much, sir.
Good luck.
Thank you.
So, when I have to check up...
All right, moving on, under old business, we have the placement of the Purple Heart signs, and I believe the DPW has suggested that we put one on Elm Street coming into town from Springfield, and we put one on Summers Road coming into town from Connecticut, and we put one on Shaker Road coming into town from Connecticut, and the reason they did not suggest North Main Street is because they said there were, I believe there were many signs there already. It's heavily signed, as I said, and Maple Street at Long Meadow Line, that's a curve, and I guess it's not recommended, so, I don't know if the board, have you guys had a chance to, you know where the spots are, right?
Yep.
Are there any questions or any problem with that?
No, I actually just emailed Bob back and said, that's good.
Okay, all right. So, I'd like to, to propose a motion to accept the placement of the Purple Heart signs as indicated by the DPW.
So moved.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Next item is, I believe one of the, one of the residents of Braburn Road wanted a sign for no commercial vehicles to go down Braburn Road, and from what I read in the, in the correspondence from the DPW, it's not a simple matter, because that road turns, goes to, it's into Springfield, and there's an Admiral Street there, and we have to get the Springfield Department of Public Works and the Mass DOP approval for this before we can act, so I think our next step will probably be, I don't know if we go back to Bob Parent and ask him to follow through on these with the state and with the city of Springfield, and then...
Thanks.
Go ahead.
I talked to him, it doesn't meet the requirements for an exclusion.
Okay.
Based on a few things, but there's a certain geometry that has to be met, and then there's a certain width and whatnot, and through traffic, so it doesn't meet any of the state requirements for an exclusion of truck traffic through the neighborhood. The issue, I guess, that we ran into was at some point, somebody had told her that, or the resident told the resident that we would put the sign up.
Oh, okay.
So, we've got to kind of go back and readdress that, but additionally, he had spoken with Springfield Public Works, because we needed their permission as well as the DOTs to do the same, and Springfield wasn't willing to move on that either, so realistically, there's nothing we can do.
I guess they're using that through a cut through.
Yeah, that Admiral Street, I think that's past, past the church and going down to Dwight Road, yeah.
Yeah, they cut through Dwight Road, but based on the width of the street, the geometry of the turn, there's really no, Mass DOT and Springfield won't approve it anyway, even if we wanted to do it, so it's kind of like out of our hands, but I guess somebody said...
Maybe we could get back to them and tell them, you know?
Well, I said, I told Bob that I would, once we discussed it here, that I would contact the resident, let them know why.
And the guy call you, right?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so we'll take no action on that, obviously, so. Under new business, we have a request from Jennifer Kinder for the summer reading program event along the rail trail to support Special Olympics on Wednesday, July 13th, 2016, from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. And also, along with that, is a temporary food service permit, application approved by Amy Petrowski, Health Director, approved by DPW, and there's a pending recommendation from the Police Department. So, I would like to propose a motion to approve the request for the summer reading program event for Wednesday, July 13th, 2016, and also for the temporary food service permit, with the caveat that the recommendations from the Police Department have to be accepted before it becomes final.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. We have a request from our rec director for a movie night, Friday, June 17th, from 7:30 p.m. to 10:30 p.m. at Center Field, and also, along with that, a temporary food service permit, and the application has been approved by Amy Petrowski, Health Director. I'm saying your name a lot tonight. Since you're here, do you want to come up and briefly explain what you're going to do, or?
Congratulations.
All right.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So, the Recreation Commission, over the past few years, I've been bringing, you know, kind of event ideas to them, you know, to be more community-based. I feel like I live in the youth sports department a lot, you know, so trying to branch out and offer some community events, and much like the bonfire we did with the fire department. So, the movie event was kind of the big idea. There's companies that are fully licensed and insured, they come out, you give them electricity, they take care of the rest, you give them the movie, which will be Minions, by the way, very popular movie with the kids. They show the movie, the food permit is for the popcorn, and off we go. Just a new event that we'd like to do at the last day of school every year from this point forward, and this being the first year.
Do you have a good turnout for that?
We'll see, we'll see next, next Friday, so...
And people showed interest?
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's, Long Meadow does it, towns all over the Cape, all over, you know, beach towns all over New England do them, basically, every single Friday. And our goal is to have this kind of grow, be able to offer these events over the summer and into the fall for years to come.
Sounds great. Thank you. All right. Having heard that, I would like to propose a motion to approve, A, the movie night for Friday, June 17th, from 7:30 p.m. to 10:30 p.m., and B, the temporary food service permit for the same event.
So moved.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
There you go.
Gentlemen, thank you.
You're welcome. Next item we have is a request from Graziano Gardens regarding an application for a temporary food service permit, and this is really temporary, on Wednesday, June 22nd, 2016, from 12:15 to 1:45. In conjunction with their Tour de Fleure, the application's approved by Amy Petrowski, Health Director. I'd like to propose a motion to approve that application for a temporary food service permit on Wednesday, June 22nd, from 12:15 to 1:45 p.m.
So moved.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's see. Next, we have a request for a larger, I believe it's dead end, dead end sign at the intersection of South Bend Lane and Summers Road. The Police Department recommendations are, let's see, I don't know where I saw this. They did, they did recommend that a larger dead end sign be installed at the intersection of South Bend Lane and Summers Road, so vehicle operators can clearly see the sign before entering the neighborhood. This sign would replace the current no exit sign. So, I would like to propose, or any comments, or?
Do they have a problem down there?
I guess from what the person who filed the request, Tom McGowan, said, the people don't realize it's a dead end, so when they go down there, they turn around and they like speed back. So, so I guess he's figuring, you nip it in the bud and then they'll, you know, they won't go down the road to begin with, and they won't have to speed back, so. Any other questions or comments? I'd like to propose a motion to approve the larger dead end sign for South Bend Lane and Summers Road.
So moved.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Next item, there was a request for a speed limit sign in the vicinity of Oak Brook Drive, and the Police Department recommendation is, the speed limits are controlled by the Mass by Chapter 90, Section 17 and 18, so they reviewed Oak Brook Drive, and they determined the posting of a speed limit sign is not necessary, as it's a closed neighborhood without the issues of commuter traffic, but they are recommending that the DPW install a caution children's sign for traffic entering the neighborhood from Elm Street, and it's, goes on to explain where it should be, where it should be placed. And they also recommend that residents contact the police with specific information regarding vehicles believed to be operating through the neighborhood at a speed greater than a 30 mile an hour limit. So, what I'd like to do is propose a motion for the caution children's sign for Oak Brook Drive.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Doesn't matter, it's my neighborhood, should I not?
It doesn't matter.
No. Give it a second.
Unless you're going to, unless you're going to put up a toll booth or something and have some financial gain from it. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next item, we have a couple of letters from the, from the Police Department. The eligibility list that I believe Chief Melus had requested a while back, November 25th of 2015, well, there was never any action taken on that list, so our current, our new police chief is requesting that we cancel the eligibility list, and at the future date, hopefully not too far in the future, they're going to request a new list, because we want to fill the vacancies that are in the Police Department, so I would, I would, I think that's just, we don't, we don't have to vote on that, right?
What?
He's just, the police chief's just informing us that, he's asking us, the eligibility list from November is expired, so...
Well, he wants you to make an appointment, or the new manager to make an appointment, so he's, he needs a request and new eligibility list.
Well, he's, he's not even asking that, he says, I anticipate a new request will be made in the future to replace this one. He just wants us to know that he wants, this list is no longer valid. So, we don't have to do anything, right?
No.
Okay. All right. And also, regarding the towing service contracts, those are due July, those are up June 30th, and our position, obviously, because of, because of our position, we really can't enter into any long-term contracts, so I believe it's, the suggestion is to extend the current contracts for three months, and then carry it into the next year, and then allow the Town Council to take, make more permanent action on that. So, I'd like to propose a motion to extend the towing service contracts for the, both the companies that are towing for 90 days.
So moved.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Board of Health?
Board of Health. We've got the new 2016, 2017 recycling programs out, but they're being printed right now, so they should be ready when, the rain, from the printer.
Yeah.
So, they'll be in that Town Hall next week, so anybody who wants to pick one up. And, yeah, and also, they'll be mailed out, I think they go through the reminder, don't they? With the reminder, both office, yeah. So, you'll be getting those shortly. I'm following up for that.
Yeah, then you get the...
Yeah. The request for approval of the 2016 Skyhawk Summer Camp at East Summitta High School Soccer Field, July 11th through the 22nd, 2016, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Application approved by Amy Petorski, Health Director, permission granted by the school. I'd like to make a motion to approve this request for the approval for the Skyhawk Summer Camp, doing those signs.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Yep.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
And, uh, also a request for...
Before we get to the next one, I'm gonna recuse myself because my wife works at the Arbor, so I don't feel I should be voting on this, so.
Okay, this is a request for approval of the, um, two thousand sixteen Arbor Summer Camp, one twenty-six Industrial Drive, June twentieth, uh, August twentieth, two thousand sixteen, from six thirty AM to six o'clock PM. Application approved by Amy Petorski, Health Director, um, and they, looking for a swimming pool permit, uh, pending health director inspection on June sixteen, two thousand sixteen. Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll, I'll second on necessity. Any discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, and the next one I got is a Health Department, uh, for approval of Sharp's disposal program and Sharp's consent form. Um, I'd like to make the motion to, uh, uh, to approve the Health Department for approval of the, of the Sharp disposal program and to sign the consent form.
So...
Go ahead. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the last one I got here is a request from the Library, temporary food service permit, Tuesday, June twenty-first, two thousand sixteen, from five thirty PM to seven thirty PM for the summer reading kickoff party. Application approved by Amy Petorski, uh, Health Director. I'd like to make a motion to request for the temporary food service permit for those dates.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. All right. Thank you. Under correspondence, correspondence, we just want to note that we have thank you letters from Jenna Mazza and Jessica Hayward, who are scholarship recipients from the town. Um, so they were kind enough to write us letters of thanks. Uh, before we get to the town council, uh, it's like Manley, would you mind doing the meetings?
Meetings, invitations and reminders, uh, Board of Selectment meeting will be held the next one Tuesday, June twenty-first, two thousand sixteen, here at the Council on Asian Media Room, three twenty-eight North Main Street, and Police Department National Night Out, Tuesday, August second, two thousand sixteen, from five thirty to eight PM in the high school parking lot.
And just to be Captain Obvious, I believe there's gonna be some sort of parade on the Fourth of July. I'm not sure, but I think...
Well, I wasn't here.
I know. That's why I figured I'd add it. All right. Town Council. We're setting some sort of record here tonight.
We're getting through. We're doing some business.
How are you, sir?
Should be late more often. Hey, Jim, how are you?
I only got one more chance. How are you today? Good.
It almost didn't sound facetious.
All right. Um, I'm guessing twenty's not executive, right?
Uh, not to my understanding, no.
Okay, and?
Twenty-one would not be.
Okay, and about twenty-two and twenty-three?
Twenty-two would be executive.
Oh, no, actually not.
That's collective bargaining.
Right.
Matters.
Okay. And twenty-three isn't, right?
The reappointments, um, would not be.
Okay. Well, you're gonna explain to us anyways what's going on there, so.
Hopefully. I do have an item that I think should go on the board, which would be, uh, threatened litigation, just to give the board a overview.
Okay.
It's not on the agenda, only because the information only came in, uh, this morning.
Okay. We'll put that in under executive. It'll be twenty-three D. All right, so why don't we take, um, we'll take number, item twenty first, the ambulance contract. Um, here's what's been happening. I've spoken to the representative for, um, AMR. I explained the situation, um, with the, you know, we can't go into a three-year contract. There is a provision in the clause for a one-year bump, you know, so that's what I basically, I, I told them I'd bring to the board is that we extend it for a year and then let the new town council deal with it, you know, six, seven months from now, you know, whether they want to put it out to bid or, um...
And, and as long as the company is willing to, to agree...
Yes.
To continuing on the same terms.
They are, yeah.
What I probably would suggest, though, is to, um, uh, my understanding is that the, uh, council, um, and I don't know if you guys know any of the members of the new council, but, um...
We know two of them.
Is planning on having some organizational meetings to discuss different issues. My, it's also my understanding that's the intent of the council, uh, even though not required, or apparently it's the gray area, whether it's required or not, to, um, hold those meetings, post them and keep minutes, just as if they were already sworn into office just for the sake of, uh, open government. Um, that being said, since this is, your intent is to extend the contract for a year under the provisions of the contract, it would make some sense, continuity probably, to, to raise this issue at one, at the next, at the first meeting of the council and just say the board is, is voted to do this subject to, uh, approval of...
How can they approve anything if they don't take effect until July first and this contract ends July first?
But the issue is they're gonna, you could extend it for a limited, for a lesser period of time.
Well, yeah, I also, yeah, I guess, but I discussed that with their representatives too, and anyways, go ahead.
But I mean, so my, my thought is that because of this three-week hiatus here where you're making decisions that are impacting the budget and whatnot that's gonna come forward in the next year, um, to give the council the option to say, "No, we don't want to do that," uh, which I doubt that they would do, but at least to, to give them the ability to, to be aware of what the board intends to do, and, and see whether there's some other alternative they might have that they'd be willing to accept and the board will need to go forward with.
Okay.
Through the board?
Yeah.
I thought we were, in the stuff I read before I came here, we're gonna do it for ninety days.
No, that was the, um, those were the towing contracts, I think. I don't think we were gonna do this because there's not, there's no way we could do it for ninety days because you either have to, you basically have to sign with them because there's no way you could go out to bid, I would think, in ninety days and...
Right. Well, you, you actually don't have to bid the ambulance contract. It's not subject to thirty B, but you do have, you would want to have probably a, a full-blown proposal from people who wanted to come in and bid. I mean, it's fine, the board could vote to extend for a year and, and just notify the council if that's their intent and let the council deal with it when it comes forward. But if there's a, an issue, then you're locked in for a year with this contract, then better have the new government say, "We're agreeable to that" rather than throw stones saying, "It's something we didn't want to impart." But that, that's purely just a matter of opinion, not law.
Okay. Any comments from the board?
What else can we do for something?
Yeah, that's the thing. I really can't. So...
They're all willing to do it for less than a year, that pretty much is where we're at, so we're stuck with it for that one year unless we...
And I've got this really convoluted motion I want to make. I've got this really convoluted motion I wanted to make that I, I propose a motion to vote to extend the contract for a year pursuant to agreement by the, by a meeting of the new town council with the caveat that if they don't meet before June twenty-first, it becomes effective because we won't be meeting after that to do, to make any changes.
You could declare it effective at the meeting at the twenty-first.
Okay.
If you got the meeting at the twenty-first.
That'd seem better.
If you can't do it.
All right, so I'd propose a motion to, to approve a one-year extension of the ambulance contract, uh, to be effective June twenty-first.
July twenty-first.
No, June twenty-first.
July twenty-first, okay.
Well, actually, it'd be effective July first, but to be, to become permanent? What would be the word?
You could ratify.
So you get paid for the big words.
Ratified. Ratified by the council.
Okay, be rat, okay. Um, be effective June twenty-first upon being ratified by the council, uh, the, the new town council.
And in a failure to ratify, it'll become effective going forward.
Okay, failure to ratify, it'll be, it will be effective going forward for a year.
Can you say it again?
No.
Twice. So moved.
You already did that.
Whatever that means, second.
All right. Any further discussion? Thank God, no? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Just for the record, to clarify, when you're saying ratified, the intent is that they, they're unable to meet, to, to discuss it, not that if they say no, then it's not gonna go forward.
Okay. All right, the next item is...
New hire, Recreation Department.
Colin, you wanna come up? Sorry, I mean, I shouldn't have told you. I thought it was the San Jose Charter.
They're having a tough moment.
Yes.
Sorry, I'm having a side, uh, conversation.
Okay, sidebar? All right. Um, well, why don't you explain to us what you're looking for, and then we'll explain to you our problems.
Yeah, exactly. Um, so when the budget was approved, um, it, within the budget, had a position in my office that was not funded, which means at the end of this fiscal year, that position will no longer, because of not being funded, the person would, uh, then, you know, not be an employee of the office. But also within that budget was the addition of an assistant director for the office with a start date of, obviously, July first. With the town council coming in and the town manager, obviously, that kind of throws in another curve ball.
Mm-hmm.
But, uh, without having support in the office, coming into our busiest season of the year, uh, I, I feel that it would be a necessity to hire someone for the Recreation Department for a start date of July first to make sure that we're able to execute our programs, you know, during the months of July, you know, and forward.
Why don't you give us your, because I know we got this whole town council thing hanging over our head.
This is one of those areas that the, that the new charter creates some real, real issues with because it's really gonna be a matter of interpretation. The director's saying, "I need this person in order to make the function, the programs function. The programs are gonna start in a week when school gets out, pretty much."
Yep.
You need this be, this up and running. So we're gonna have, we're gonna have somebody there doing this up until July one. Come July one, that person goes away. I've got money to have someone fill that position. What I'm not hearing is, is the intent for the current employee to fill that position?
That would be my intent, um, you know, um, but obviously that person would have to put in an actual application for the assistant director position.
Right.
Um, and that would be obviously up to that employee and, I guess, any other internal candidates that may consider it.
Right. So the, the, I, I think this, the situation is that it's one of, it's really on, on, on the borderline as to whether this is a position that has to be filled or action that needs to be taken with respect to the employment. I mean, you've had both situations over the past month, um, with respect to retaining people and letting people go, where you've made the determination that there was sufficient need for both, uh, different situations. So I, I think that the director is making a case to say that, "I need, I need a body there July one, and I won't have a body there July." And I don't know, and this is kind of where the council hasn't met yet, he doesn't, he won't know who will be able to hire this person come July one, because you won't have, you might, but I, I'm guessing you won't have an interim manager yet for, for a week or two, maybe.
Yeah.
And so that pushes it into July. So, to make a simple thing, long-winded like attorneys do, um, my suggestion would be probably that you use the authority under the charter that says, "This is a, uh, an appointment that needs to be made." Um, and allow them to make the appointment and then, uh, revisit it going forward. If there's an, if there's a need, then the manager can decide what action they want to take going forward. But it's a position that's already been funded by town meeting in any event.
This position runs to July first?
The current position runs to July first.
The one that we'd be voting on?
The new position, no, the one you're gonna vote on, is a new hire...
Okay.
Permanent employee that would continue as an employee until their contract ended, and it's a contract, so you don't need a written contract with the employee between that period of time.
And that money's already in the budget?
Yep.
Okay.
We voted on that, right?
Yeah.
The only question is in the timing issue, because that's really the key here. Um, we haven't gone out to bid or advertised.
We haven't posted the position.
And so we're gonna need that, number one, and then number two, you're gonna have to come to a contractual agreement with the employee too. So, um, sooner than later, he has to know what he's gonna do if you're gonna have somebody onboard by July one or July two. So that's kind of where we are.
In light of the fact that it was already in the budget and it's not like we're, I don't, I...
I created it. The position's already created.
That's right. I don't see how the other five-sevenths of the town council wouldn't agree with us, but, um, but you never know. But in any event, um, I'd like to propose a motion, I guess, was it be to allow the rector to pursue, uh, going out and hiring an, an employee to fill his position?
And then coming back for the, for the appointment, because I believe you're the appointing authority, right?
Okay.
Yeah, so I guess I would, uh, post the position and make a recommendation for employment to, to you, um, with hopes that you can finalize a contract with that person by July one.
Okay.
So at this point, the authorization would be for the director to go out and seek a candidate to fill this position and then make whatever determinations, if something comes back, if somebody you've got to go forward.
All right. As I've said many times, what he said. Is there, somebody move it? Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Gentlemen?
Thank you, sir.
Enjoy. Hopefully we'll see you at the movie.
All right. Um, okay, so now we get, let's see, item twenty-three, which is the reappointments of elected and appointed officials.
And again, we get into this issue of what your authority is under the charter now, between now and when the board ends. And, um, Lorraine had called this morning saying there was a discussion about extending the appointment periods for ninety days or some period of time. Um, the law, the law is that when you have someone who's in a position where their term ends at a specific point in time, that if action is not taken to enforce that termination at that point in time, they stay in office or performing their functions until there's an appointment, either their reappointment or there's an appointment of another person to fill that position, and that person takes his or her hold of the office. So these holdover positions, if you don't appoint, um, the people whose positions are expiring on July one, they would hold office through the date that the manager...
Okay.
Appoints their successor or appoints them as to continue or appoints their successor to go forward.
So in effect, we don't have to do anything to, to extend them?
That's my recommendation. You can go the other way.
That's fine.
You, you can extend it for a period of time, but I think it, it leaves the flexibility because, you know, ninety days...
You don't have to.
You may not have any, you don't have to do any. He may not, he or she may not have addressed all of the positions that have to be filled and found candidates they want to do, and then they've gotta take some further action. And here, you won't have to take it.
Okay. That worked for me.
Me too.
Okay. So we won't, we just won't do anything and they'll automatically renew, for lack of a better word, or continue until that time as they're, they're either replaced or they, or they get voted in for another year.
Right. Their, their appointment isn't extended. They're just continuing in a position until someone, termination is made, whether they're gonna continue or someone else is gonna be placed.
Okay. Great. And now the Selectmen's Office.
I think that issue more, is, is more to deal with, um, uh, the filling of the position, Lorraine's position at this point. Lorraine is leaving, uh, June thirtieth?
She's leaving August twelfth.
So...
Her husband doesn't know it yet, but she's leaving August twelfth.
So the, the issue is there's apparently, uh, an employee in the town who has been interested in, in doing, doing this position for a period of time. Um, and since this is going to be a position that's gonna work, probably, you know, reality, probably very closely with the manager, it really is a position that probably shouldn't be appointed by the Board of Selectmen.
Right.
So the suggestion might be to appoint, uh, someone, this woman or some other woman or some other man, on a, on a...
Temporary.
Temporary basis to get in a little early, get trained into what needs to be done to, to do the position, and then, um, leave it for the manager to determine whether they want to appoint the person permanently or they want to look for someone else to fill the position. But not to leave the position unaddressed because that can, that was gonna create some issues, really.
Well, yeah, because we'd have that position unaddressed and probably the town manager's position unaddressed, so.
You'll be in trouble.
Yeah.
Right.
So is that something, do we have to vote on that now? Can we take it up on the twenty-first?
You can take it up on the twenty-first, assuming that you've got some, then the other issue too, the other issue too, that I think you probably want to think about between now and the twenty-first too, is whether the budget has funding in it to, to cover a, an overlap for a week or to, to allow, if you do decide on the twenty-first to do it, that you've got that eight or ten days to have that person work, or whatever person is, work with Lorraine to sort of get an understanding of the nuances of, for her job, because it's really not something you step in and, and really sort of grasp.
No, we know it.
I got a question. Does that have to be within the town hall, that, that appointment?
Doesn't have to be.
It don't have to be?
No, it's a non-union. Lorraine's a non-union position. I do believe that, that we're talking about a person who is a member of the union, but this would be a, a non-union position, and, um, if one of the people who are in the town hall who are members of the TEU would want to apply for this, you'd probably also want to consider whether you would grant a temporary leave of absence from their union position to handle this in the off chance that the manager chose to go in another direction, no matter who it is who comes into the position, so that they're not, ends up without a job.
Right. Okay. Yeah, we'll give this, we'll come back with this on the twenty-first and make a decision then, because there's too many questions.
Yeah, and you might want to post too. You might want to, you don't have to, but you might want to post it, but you don't have to.
All right. So now, if everything else is executive, so I'd like to propose a motion to go into executive session to discuss matters of, uh, union, I believe it's all union collective bargaining and threatened litigation.
And, and, yeah, threatened litigation.
Um, to return to open session, or threatened litigation for to discuss in open session might be detrimental to the town and to return to open session only to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Selectman Gorman?
Yes.
And Selectman Manley?
Yes.
Selectman Federiceus?